All set? Perfect. Good evening and welcome to the December 21st meeting of Pembroke School Committee. The meeting's ordered at 7:03. Just for those who are here besides us, or actually, nobody else besides us, the meeting is recorded mainly for the purpose of the minutes. It is published to the school committee website within 24 hours, usually next day, of the meeting. Also, just people watching at home, if you have questions, you can send them into scinfo@pembroke12.org, superintendent monitors that mailbox. And if we're on the topic, we usually will cover it. If it's after, if it's critical, we'll cover it then. Otherwise, we'll make sure you get a response back relatively quickly. So, no visitors, no adjustments to the agenda.
The only, I forgot to just include a masking update.
Okay. Okay. Masking update on the superintendent's report, which is still kind of under some of the other things we have there. Communications, non-bill schedules are being circulated today. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of December 7th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Susie, second by David Lewis-Lauder. And for the discussion, he's also next to me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For us, staying, it is unanimous, perfect.
Do you want to go back to communications for a second and talk about the...
Oh, actually, yeah, I was going to fall into communication, sorry. So, we did get a request to see if we would send a similar letter to what the Kingston School Committee sent to Commissioner Jeff Riley. It was in the packets the other day. They are asking, as well as other communities, that's the same question. I think a couple down on the Cape have asked questions of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, what they're using for data to make their determination on maintaining the mainly masking provisions for the school day, how they came up with the 80%, all those types of things related to what they did for, what they're doing for guidance and setting for mandates. The request is we send a similar letter to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, not sure if people have a chance to take a look at this.
Yep.
Thoughts, comments?
Yes.
Yep, go right ahead.
I'm just trying to give somebody else the turn. Well, I, you know, I don't mind communicating again because I do, I like the idea of getting more detail behind the why, or the what that we're being asked for. I guess I'm looking for more of the why. I think the timing of this letter, because it went out the end of November, and I think it's my understanding they haven't gotten a response yet.
No.
So, I think we have to position ourselves that we may not get a response for quite a while. And I would ask that if we do send something like this, given the timing of it and the recent variants that are now out and about, that any consideration they're having tied to that would be included in the response. And, well, I think that, I think that was it. I think that was everything I had. And then just, I kind of was looking at how the recent spikes compare to the spikes from before, and, you know, how they included all of that in their original assessment of getting to the 80%. So, I think, I like the extra detail. I like the idea of getting that. I just want to get them to get them into the weeds a little bit more because it helps us with what we ultimately decide to do. I think when it's vague, it kind of leaves us hanging a bit. And, you know, anything they can do to help us with our decision-making and to, you know, to support whatever type of situation is next to come, because I'm assuming there's, you know, we're going to have waves of this, but in different discussions that, you know, obviously, we're getting variant after variant after variant. So, I'd like them to consider that in their response too, recognizing this, you know, this is going to go for a while. And we have to, you know, I don't want to get to a point where we're having to send a letter every time we have any variant. I, you know, if we can close it, tighten it up a little bit, and just kind of give us phases of how we're going to work, you know, ultimately out of this or manage this, that would be great. That's what I'm looking for.
Anybody else comment?
I mean, obviously, this is a bit different, right? Kingston school system goes up to sixth grade, so their challenge is, their population is just getting access to the vaccine. So, they're approaching it a little bit different, but I think the concept for us still reiterates what we were trying to get earlier, right? That we still feel like locally, it's best to have the decision in our hands if possible. So, this letter hits on that, which I appreciate. And like you said, it's really asking them to give us some more detailed thoughts behind what they're bringing to us. So, I would support something along this line as well.
Yes.
I had two thoughts on it. One, you make a good point, Lance, is that it represents Kingston 1 through 6. You know, how does Silver Lake theoretically feel about this encompassing the other part? I'm assuming they want to be involved. I'd like to see them sign it. And I know it sounds crazy. I like letters that are signed. I would like my name to be on it. I don't know about the rest of the committee, but I think instead of saying, oh, some committee wrote us a letter, no, we're real people behind the letter. You know, if you have a question, you know, I'm ready for it if they are, you know, type thing.
No, I echo with that. I like the idea of all of our names on the letter and signing it.
To me, the one thing, I do be honest, you know, they are K through 6, right? And they have a different, I guess this is a different approach, right? K through 6 versus K through, pre-K through 12. The thing I like about the letter, and I like about what the request is, is it's requesting what the off-ramp is, right? We had this last year, and we've had this, we've had this since day one of this, you know, March 13th, 2020, and never got what metrics were. What's the comparison? So, what's the goal? What's the objective? And when we get to X, right? Everybody was quick to say, well, when you get to this metric, you need to go to remote learning, which they thankfully taken away that as an approach earlier today, the governor did. But it's the thought of, how can you ever achieve a goal if you don't know what the goal is, right? We kept moving the goal, we kept moving the bar last school year. Now, it's a question of what is the new one? So, I think the first paragraph is, to me, critical to this is, you know, what's the off-ramp to get out of where we are today? So, the other pieces are critically important, right? Because it's going fact-based, which we all have to be. But to me, understanding and asking what the goal is, to me, is what we're trying to achieve here. So, otherwise, what's going to be in this forever? And, you know, Susie, to your point of there'll be another variant, there always, even COVID-19 was a variant of, you know, different SARS virus. So, we can continue to talk about this, but we'll be, they talked about this for 20 years before COVID-19. We'll talk about it for 20 years after, probably a lot more before and after too. So, at what point do we get to somewhat of an abnormal situation? So, that said, I have no problem doing something like this. The question I would have is, how do we want to do it? Because we have to mark this up. Would the best way to be, I'll work with Aaron to mark it up. Do you have a workable copy, like a Word copy? We'll mark it up, not just changing Kingston to Pembroke, but do it based upon what's important to us in this committee. Yeah, I think we just don't sign it as a committee. We sign it with our individual names. And then we can vote on sending it at the next meeting, and then it would go right away. Because we would have to take a vote to do a correspondence for all of us. Anyone have an issue with that?
Is everyone comfortable putting their name on it?
Yep.
I'm an I am.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Lance.
Okay. So, we'll mark it up, we'll get it back, and then first meeting in January, we can vote, and then it can go. Fair enough?
I'll show under communications, I just wanted to let you all know about a communication that I sent out to families in the community earlier this week, just letting them know, given all that has happened the past couple of weeks, not just here in Pembroke, but in the country, I think it's time that we have a conversation about school safety protocols and procedures. So, Chief Rick McDonald and myself will be hosting a public community, whatever the right word is, forum on January 10th at 6 o'clock. You guys are all welcome to participate if you're available. I'm pretty sure we're going to hold it virtually. We've found that families are much more apt to participate if they can log on where they're at. Rick is, Chief McDonald is also bringing a representative from the FBI that works on this stuff across the nation to help give us some kind of best practices. Our intent in the meeting is to get feedback from families to address some of the concerns. And with that in mind, we'll be requesting that folks submit their questions ahead of time so that we can supply answers that night instead of leaving them hanging. In addition, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I would like to put for the first or second, whenever the meetings in January are, a meeting with Chief McDonald and our school resource officer in this group, both in public session and in executive session. So, there are obviously some things we talk about in public. There are some more details to our plans that we'll discuss in executive session.
So, just a few things to mention on that, just so people watching at home understand, because they have to do with security plans, there are certain things that can be shared, certain things that can't be shared. Even when we've gotten our security updates, and I don't know if, David, were you here when we had Chris Walken and Rick Wall come in? Was that before this?
Yes, no, I was here.
What they did is they actually gave us the plan, talked to the plan, but we had to get everything back in hard copy. Nothing is done electronic. So, there's only certain things they can tell us in executive session and public session. So, it's not that they don't want to share information. However, anyone planning anything against or planning a threat, they don't want to clearly give them understanding what their plan is to address it. So, that's one of the reasons why certain things can't be shared. Other things, obviously, you know, when there's active police investigations, there's certain things that can be shared and can not be. At that point, we take our lead from them, you know, is kind of the point. I do think it's great to get the questions ahead of time, just so the presentation can flow a lot better. The other comment I'll make, and then I'll see if anybody else has anything, is situates still virtual for their meetings, and what they've, what they've done, one of the methods they use is they use Facebook Live. I was going to bring it up tonight anyway, because I was talking with one of the members last week, just, and I don't know if it works for us or not, but, or if it works ever for anything. But I know PAC TV is great, but it's just an option I just thought was interesting. They're doing all of their meetings. They're not planning on going virtual till at least next year, I'm sorry, in person, but just one of the...
I think the timing of the meeting also sets us up that if there's an ask that comes out of it, we're lined up to have a conversation going into Springtown meeting.
Yep, absolutely. Anybody else? Sue, Susie? Great, thank you for doing that. But, questions, because it wasn't in the email that questions could be asked ahead of time.
Right, so we're going to give, I'm obviously going to, I just wanted to get the date out there, and then we'll give more information probably first week of January to somewhere, the email questions.
Fantastic, okay. So, now we're going into interrupted learning update?
Interrupted learning update. As you, don't be too horrified by the density of the packets there. I've been just keeping them all together so that they're easy for people to find, so that you can always refer back to the previous presentation. This month, all I really have to do is to update you on three, actually, pretty exciting things that are happening in regards to interrupted learning. One has to do with some tutoring. Another is an acceleration academy grant. Am I not speaking?
Yeah, went here a little better, I think.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, guys. And then, just to follow up on some of the teacher professional development that I've mentioned in the past, and what we have done with that opportunity as well. So, if you see on the schedule there, we're in that third arrow, which is the winter. And we are, at this point, in a situation where we are developing interventions and progress monitoring for students. So, at this point in the year, we've collected data on where students are, and especially at the elementary level, where they are in relationship to the skills that are identified as their, like, core standards for their grade level. And we have that information and are ready to start some interventions with tutors, where the tutors will be working with students starting in K1 and 2 in January to work on specific skills with those students. So, it's not something that you enter this tutoring program and you're in it for the rest of your life. You're in it for a very short period of time to try to remediate a particular skill. For example, at some of the earlier grade levels, phonics has presented as an issue where kids are learning to still sound some words out. You can imagine last year with masks and with the kind of interaction that students were having in classrooms, that sometimes that could be difficult for kids. So, that's an area where teachers and students are continuing to work and integrate very much this year. So, it's foreseeable that a tutor might spend some time with a student working on that particular skill set, which obviously then is, you know, allows a student to progress much further in terms of literacy. So, that's the kind of work that we'll be doing with our earliest learners, K1 and 2, starting them in January. And it's not just specific to, excuse me, to reading or to literacy. We have also done the same thing with math. But we will start with the youngest kids first, and then as we start to see some stabilization there, some acquisition of some of the skills that, you know, teachers are a little concerned about, then we'll continue to move into the upper grades, which will be a perfect segue for sort of the MCAS period of time. They'll be working with tutors in February and March and April as their MCAS exams are starting to unfold and come, and be scheduled in their grade levels. So, I think that the tutoring piece should be really powerful. We started advertising this back in November, and it has been a very slow process in terms of finding highly qualified people to come in and do this work. So, we've done a little bit of adjustment, and we seem to be getting a better pool at this point. So, we're hopeful that we can really kick things off at the beginning of January.
Do you have, are there any graduates, right? Because we're just getting graduation time from, whether it be Bridge, Lawrence State, or any of the other schools?
There aren't a ton right now.
I figured, you know, December's a tough time.
We've reached out to a few former students, actually, that we know are sort of in the mix or might be around. There is not a whole lot of, there hasn't been a lot of success there yet, but you never know. You know, we're hopeful that we're going to get a few more. We have a number of former graduates that have been working with us as long-term subs, and they've been terrific. And they're certified, and they're great, and we're hoping that they might be able to entice a few of their colleagues from their programs to join us here. So, we're working them. And we also, I'm hopeful that we may be able to bring a few retired teachers back to do some of this work as well, which would be a great fit, because now you're bringing back, you know, teachers who know the system, know their colleagues, know the kids, and that would be a great, that would be really helpful if we're able to get a few of our retired staff to come back and work with us. So, we're hopeful, but it's a very slow process. And as you can imagine, people aren't always nervous about the pandemic and how much they want to be out and around students. And so, we're kind of allaying some of those concerns as well as just trying to attract people to their role. One of the other things that we're excited about is a grant that we have just submitted. This grant provides for math acceleration academies, and it is for, it's based on your population in grades 3 through 10, and you receive a certain amount of money for that in order to pay teachers. The stipends are outstanding for teachers, and it's geared for February vacation and April vacation, with some requirements about how much math time is required for each thing. Specialists are required for the younger grades so that their day is not just math. So, there's a few things in there that will make it a little bit of a different twist here, because of course, we'll be offering it Tuesday through Friday. We will not be offering it on the holiday. But that will also provide us with some time for teachers to prepare before February vacation, you know, if we are able to get this grant, which we're very hopeful that we will be able to do that. So, we'll be able to offer some math academy work for students in grades 3 through 10. And it will be a short, again, it's one of those short hit kind of things where you're looking, we'll identify specific grade level skills that we feel are essential for our students to continue to work on. And then, you know, with that 20 hours, you're hoping that you see some real gains as they progress. So, that's really the goal for the acceleration academies. We don't know, you know, there's always some unknowns with this kind of work. We don't know what the teacher response is going to be, but the stipends are excellent. So, we're hopeful that that will be a draw for our teachers. And we're also hoping that we have some families that are here during those weeks that are willing to submit to that kind of an experience. I'm open to being creative with whatever we get, so hopefully, at least be able to provide... I'm open to being creative with whatever we get, so hopefully at least be able to provide something to families that want that opportunity, so.
No folks kind of plan fairly far. How, when do you think you'll be able to pull the trigger on kind of advertising?
So I'm hopeful that we'll know very soon.
Yeah, we should know in the next two weeks whether or not the grant was approved.
So how much is the grant?
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-five thousand?
Hundred and sixty grand over, over the two, over the two, over the two vacations. So we, Erin and I talked about it, and we really dedicated most of it to teachers, so that the teachers, that we can have the right amount of teachers to really do small groups. They're recommending really, really tiny groups for this work, which is, which is important, so.
What's the date you find out?
They said in the next two weeks.
They said early January, so I would assume we'll hear either the week of the 3rd or the week of the 10th.
Yes, Suzie, I don't give you a lot of time for the February.
Yeah, that verification's a little bit later than it normally is this time around, right? So it's the week of the 22nd instead of that week earlier.
And we're able to kind of pulse the, the public and kind of just let them know this might happen, you know, being kind of honest that we're dependent upon the grant. But that way, they may be able to get their ducks in a row and kind of at least be aware that this exists and make...
Sure, we have a call tomorrow at 3 with Commissioner Riley, I'm sure we can get some input on the exact timeline for the grant.
I'm confident that we can pull it together, and that there will be some families that want to take advantage of it. It may not be a 3 to 10 presentation in February. Maybe by April, we'll have a larger group by April. But I think that even if we were to start it as a pilot in February, and it's relatively small, that will give us enough experience and enough, it'll give us a format and a process and protocol kind of thing for us to duplicate in April. So I think whatever we are able to garner from it is worth, worth the effort.
Absolutely. Awesome.
Should be good. This is just some information on the grant for your, you know, your viewing pleasure. And the guidelines, you know, one of, they're very specific about what, how they want students to be learning, very much in sort of a problem-solving manner. They don't obviously want kids doing worksheets all day. They want them to be able to really practice the conceptual understanding of the concepts and to, and to have some discovery and excitement and curiosity around all of this. So you, you know, the, the goal is obviously not to drill and kill these kids, right? But for them to come in and to really have an opportunity to ask questions, and for teachers to be able to sit and hear them and understand their reasoning, so then they can break down any misconceptions. So I think that that's a, could be, could be pretty fun.
So what the hell, there to me though is, what materials would they use for this?
We'll be able to use the materials that we have here. If it's project-based learning kinds of things, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we have enough paper and markers and pencils and things like that. We have, obviously, everybody's got their Chromebooks, so that's great. We have access to iReady, iReady data, so we can use that too. And our Envision curriculum is excellent, so using some of, there are parts of our curriculum in Envision that we, sometimes we don't get to. But there are some really, really high-level, problem-solving kinds of opportunities in that curriculum that we can pull in as a, I'm thinking, I was going to say the word enrichment, but it's also to obviously address skills that may not have been developed as strong as we would like them to be.
So you're using materials that isn't a repeat, but supports what you're doing?
Right, it would not be a repeat, so...
Okay, that's what I was trying to see. Because the instruction, the instruction was, right, I get all the pieces to it. Right, I get kind of logistics and the...
There's a, there's a special section in the Envision curriculum.
There's a number of extension activities, yeah.
Task, it's some kind of task, and it has a depth of knowledge attached to it. And your depth of knowledge can go from 1 to 4, depending on what type of problem you're asking students to solve. So there's, it's built into the program, but it's not one that you, that's required. It's like an additional aspect of the curriculum. So I'm, I'm confident that we can use a lot of what we have already.
And will this be at every location, or will we designate one location where everyone?
My goal would probably be to have it in two locations. Again, I haven't worked that out yet with Erin or with any of the principals, but I would hope, be hopeful that we would do seven to 10 at the high school perhaps, and do the younger students at Hovemaw, just so that Mark Duffy and I, who would probably be trying to organize a lot of this, would be able to go back and forth with a lot of...
Easily, yeah.
Easily, very easily, yeah.
Awesome.
And then the last thing is just related to the professional development that we've talked about before. We were fortunate enough to be able to use Rebus Associates for six hours of professional development, during our professional development days, to talk about accelerated learning and how you integrate those practices into your curriculum without going all the way back and starting over with the grade before. We tried to sweeten that a little bit for our teachers and offered them professional development points if they were, if they would propose to us a lesson plan or adapt a lesson plan that they have, with where did they see the gaps, how are they going to address them, and then turn that in. So we've had quite a few takers on that, and that's been exciting. We also, I also know that there are a lot of teachers that have worked on it. They just haven't had time to pull all the paperwork pieces together yet. So I think we'll be, we'll be seeing some of those rolling through the door as well, which I think is a positive thing, and it's nice for the teachers to get that, those credits for professional development. Excited about that. And that's really all I have at this point in regards to the interrupted learning.
Thank you.
I won't ask my question.
Let's see what it looks like first.
I know.
I want you to know, I just...
I already asked, I already asked the question.
I already asked it too.
I know. But I think you understand, like...
Right, but it's more of a full day now, too. So instead of the hour and a half, we're trying to, that's difficult logistically for families. I think we're talking about five, six-hour day for students.
I get it, because it's also, in some cases, if your parents were doing something right for daycare, whatever, you know, we just have to make sure we're in and always, right?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, there's lots of things to consider, so. I mean, it's rhetorical, so.
Until it isn't.
Until it isn't.
In your packet, you have a request for surplus materials, one that we have been talking about now for five years. We knew a point would come where PM 1 and PM 2, so the two buses that the district purchased following the split from Silver Lake, they had originally been purchased to do some kindergarten runs, as well as athletics. It's cost really prohibitive for the kindergarten run piece, but we do still continue to use the two district-owned buses for athletic trips. And I would say we save anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 a year if we were to go to our bus provider for those trips, as opposed to having our own buses. Our buses are quite old. They don't have quite that many miles on them because of the, the usage only for field trips and for athletics. But both buses failed inspection this year. So we've been talking about replacing them and how, you know, best to do that through long-range planning, and whether we were going to look to do it as part of the capital, or whether it was something we could kind of move our own pieces around, fund within our budget, and ask for something else for capital. And that was the strategy where we landed. We are able to fund both of these buses out of the transportation revolving account. So we've been saving our money for some athletic user fees, some transportation fees in order to build up a base to buy these two buses.
That is a great return on investment for us. They were bought on a five-year lease purchase. So we bought them through our budget, and it allowed us, you know, it wasn't too much at one time, because you did it over the five years. And as Erin said, it has been, been a great return for what we invested in them. I forget what we cost them. I think they were even used at the time we bought them, or...
They were, one was new and one was used.
One was used, yeah. So it was, it was, it was really, it worked out well. So I would think that we would want to try to replace them at some point. So during the budget process, we should look at if we could lease them again, or if we have to...
So we're, this is to purchase, so I'm asking you to...
I was just going to say, didn't you just share with us that we're going to replace them?
Right, so this is to deem these two surplus to replace them. The lead time on buses right now is July. So we had originally talked about replacing PM 1 this year, when we talked about our capital requests for last year, and PM 2 next year. Obviously, there's some economy there to replace both of them. And the timeline to get the buses is...
Is July.
Is July.
So what do we do between now and then?
So right now, we're renting buses from Ingles, which is our repair bus driver. He loans them to us, he charges us for them. So it's costing us a pretty significant amount of money for our own drivers to drive those buses, because these two buses cannot be repaired. Or you see the repair cost there, and that wouldn't...
Right, either way, they're not roadworthy, right?
No.
Yeah, deeming them as surplus is, I think, is obviously easy to do, and then...
It allows us to trade them, too.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my question, is what do we get for surplus? Where would that money go? And then what would the cost be of two? And can we lease purchase them, or do we have to buy them?
So you have to buy them. The cost for two is $192,000. There's $521,000 sitting in the transportation revolving account, because we have been saving, knowing that we were going to need to replace these two buses.
And how much do you think we can get?
Like, how much? They're not worth much because of the year on them and the cost to repair them, so I think the... And, and not a lot of good parts, right? You can see what's plotted on ours. I think the, the trade-in value is a little less than $1,000 for each of them.
Can you go out to like the tiny house market and see if anybody wants to convert them? Call HGTV, I'm telling you.
So there is money in the transportation revolving account to purchase both of these?
Yeah.
Okay, so... Shoot, I guess, let's deem this as surplus, and we have to go through, I want to understand the mechanics of how we actually would purchase them and everything else. So is there a motion to deem P1 and P2 surplus per the memo?
So moved. Second.
Motion by David, second by Lance. Any further questions?
So when we deem the surplus, you know, are we just, there's, there's no money back for this?
No, no, so deeming them surplus allows us to dispose of them in the best manner possible, which is selling them back, recycling them, donating them, whatever is the most beneficial to the district, which in this instance, yeah, in this instance, is the trade-in for that.
It's the trade-in. I just wanted to make sure I understood, sorry. Thank you.
So to actually purchase the bus, obviously they have to go to bid, correct?
No, so buses and municipal vehicles are covered under a state contract.
Okay, so with that, though, how do we, what do we do in order to move the money? Because it has to come out of the transportation revolving account, or it has to come out of the transportation account. We have to make some type of transfer and budget adjustment, correct?
No, so it can come right out of the transportation revolving account. That account, the, the account breakdown in transportation revolving is just wages and other expenses, because bus driver overtime goes through there. So under other expenses, you can purchase equipment.
Okay, but will that put us over the, I guess I'm not understanding the, because that line item wouldn't have considered, for this year? Actually, we haven't seen a line item in budget since we, so we haven't certified...
The transportation revolving account isn't, doesn't necessarily depend on a fiscal year?
Which I understand, it only goes so much, but... Okay, two things. We have to put on the January, first of January agenda, we have to certify the line, line budget.
But this won't be, wouldn't be in there.
So how... I'm, I guess I'm confused, and what do we do next?
You don't need to do anything. If you're in favor of purchasing the buses, we can purchase through Munis with a purchase order through the transportation revolving. There's no transfer that needs to happen. I would say that, you know, my suggestion is that you buy two, right? Because if the lead time is Janu, is July, and that's, that's a hopeful date. When we spoke to the vendor, there's only two vendors on the state contract. They did come out and just chat with us kind of on what's available, because we were hoping to replace at least one of them more quickly, so that we could have an option for our drivers, because the cost to rent again, like I said, for Ingles bus for the month, last month was pretty expensive.
Questions, comments, concerns, and all?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and it still leaves you $300,000 in the transportation revolving.
Okay. Okay, program studies?
Do we have to vote, because we have a motion and second?
We already voted on surplus, haven't we?
Yep.
We got a second, I think actually voted.
Did you vote for them on that, Ellen?
No, we didn't, but we never voted.
Oh, we didn't? I'm sorry. So I thought, because I thought we had it, we were gone, my bad. So all those in favor of motion by David, second by Lance, on declaring PM 1 and PM 2 a surplus?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous?
If you're in the market for a bus that doesn't run, let me know.
Tiny house people.
Party trip, if you want to buy, come on.
In your packet, you have, for a first read, the PHS program of studies. So there was a number of attachments in your packet associated with this. There was a full redline version of the program of studies. If you're having trouble sleeping at night, I suggest that, 90 or so page documents. There's a summary of kind of the minor grammatical errors as well. There's a summary of the new course proposals, which includes the pathways that we've been talking about for the past couple of years, as well as detail about each of the new course proposals. So the, the reason for putting it on as a first read tonight, education sub is going to meet, I think it's Wednesday, January 5th. I think Lance said Wednesday's best for him. Usually it goes to EdSub first before it comes to you. Because of the timeline, I'm not really sure when your January meetings are. And program of study nights at the high school is before February vacation. So we want to make sure that the first read kind of got the clock ticking, so that we can have EdSub meet the first week in January and make a full recommendation to the committee for the, for the second read and approval at your January meeting. I have to say, this is probably one of the more exciting program of studies revisions. I think the pathways is a ton of, ton of conversation we've had over the past five years, is additional opportunities for our students at the high school that gets them either some hands-on opportunities, some job training opportunities, some certification opportunities going into the job market if they're not going to go right onto college. Creation of partnerships with local businesses and industries. So though obviously it's, it's a slow start, is what we'll be suggesting, it is definitely a step in the right direction.
One thing I thought of as I was looking through the pathways, what will help? I think what will help the students, it definitely helped me in looking at it, understanding, what's the, what's the end game? What's, what does it position them for? And what do they need after that? So let me give you the example. Last week, last week, last meeting, Brenda was talking about network administrators, right? And a lot of them, they're pathway programs, certificate programs outside of school. That gets you to, after you complete that pathway, you're, you're able to take this, these types of positions. And then in order to go to the next level, you need to take this. I don't have to be exhaustive, but I think it just will help us, it'll help parents, it'll help the students to understand that if you start, pardon me, this pathway and finish, you're going to be able to do this when you, when you finish.
Right, I agree with you. And I think the part, there's two prongs to it that I think address that in particular. One is that internship opportunity.
Yep.
And the second one is the certification. So we're still teasing out the certifications, because it changes so frequently in all these industries. But I, I think we're going to have a huge run on the business, business one, because we already have such a strong program deck up. And I think that we'll also, the computer science and the digital, the digital arts pathway are a little bit smaller right now, but I think that this will, this will pull some more students into it. And again, the certifications would be Adobe Illustrator or Adobe Photoshop for digital arts, which, as a person applying for a job, having those certifications puts you in a different pool, puts you in a different pile, right? So that's what we're looking at. And we've been partnering with Mass Hire, Mike, which is a great organization. It's all over the state, but on the South Shore, and they advise you as to where the jobs, job market's going to be in the next five years, 10 years, 15 years. And the two that are on the back burner, because they are more elaborate in terms of implementing as a biomedical certification, and then the manufacturing and engineering certification. So those are the, those are two heavy hitters in terms of students leaving school with a, a well-paying job. So that's, those are a little different, and those are going to take us time in terms of training and capital purchases.
And there are going to be some times that we can't get the student to certification, because it's just, they need more stuff than we'll ever be able to get. But at least if they know that this gets you the first year of a two-year certification program, then they at least know, and it's just, we're setting the expectation, but we're also, to me, defining what the, what the desired outcome is.
Right.
Right, and that's, because...
You were talking about the grid part, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, just to drill it down a little bit more, is that, to kind of say, this is where you could end up with...
It's good, yeah. And not, not a guarantee, but, you know, this is the...
Which I think you also initiated last year, we were meeting with the Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
So what we, what we, with these in place, it makes our outreach to the Chamber of Commerce much more specific and much more valuable to our students and to the businesses, too. Because we'll have a process for them, and, you know, not just a like, hey, want to take a kid, want to take a kid to work today? So it's a little bit more defined, so I think that that's the way we want to go. But we can expand these things as well. It doesn't, like, I've looked at schools that have one for fine and performing arts. They have one for education, they have one for health. We started with these three, because we had all the courses in-house already to make the pathway. And then we're doing, we're writing grants like crazy for the biomedical and the manufacturing, which are hugely popular. We did a survey of students, which I'll share with EdSub down the road, but we surveyed the students, we got their feedback, and it's been really, it's been really kind of exciting to see all the different ways that we could do this. And it's really about relevance, right? Making your work at school relevant to what you want to do in the future. And Desi's released, has relaxed a lot of requirements, so kids can earn, earn money while they're doing this now. They can do it in the summer as an internship, they can do it over their... They can do it in the summer as an internship, they can do it over their vacations. So, to the point, you could have an AP student who is reluctant to leave their, obviously their classroom prior to exam, but they could do those internships over February, over April, a little bit in the summer. So, it's a little bit more, I just think it's a much more adaptable program for students today.
It gives them, it differentiates them from the other hundred kids who are applying for the same internship, whether it's at that point, or even if they choose to go into college, it's just that-
We also have a significant amount of students that are applying for both, you know, VTEC in the eighth grade, and maybe these, maybe as we develop these options for students, these are another way for them to get the skills that they're looking for.
I know, it was, it was kind of frustrating. One of our asks of legislators probably seven or eight years ago was to allow forming arts to be a vocational opportunity, and they were reluctant to even bring it forward because of the impact to the other districts, and kind of, I understand why, but I don't agree with the why. So, you know, this just gives a different opportunity that we can then have. So, I think, no, I think it's a great idea. I mean, obviously, you know, we talked to the chamber, it seems like years ago now, it seems so long, but it was just in the past spring, so.
And we know they want to work with us, and they've been super positive. You know, I think that we just needed to come back to them with something very specific.
Thank you.
I just had one question on this packet, it's just, it's really kind of a placement, where, where we're putting in this additional, the prior concurrent enrollment in physics is highly recommended, for instance, under like a PVP bio piece. Is there a reason why that's not here with the prerequisite piece, and instead is at the bottom of the section?
Yeah, so we don't want, we don't want kids to not take a class because they haven't taken physics. We can, we can place it anywhere we want, but we also want students who are entertaining majors in the sciences to realize there is a value to physics.
Gotcha.
So, some of our students, because of their, their pathway through science, on occasion, there are a couple of students that sometimes just don't think about that, and we just want to make sure that they're realizing that physics is a really important component to a science pathway.
I was seeing it consistently with everywhere, where you were kind of saying there was a prerequisite, I was like, there's got to be a reason for this, but I just didn't-
Yeah, it's not a prerequisite, we don't want to rule kids out of AP camp or out of AP bio, but we also want them to be aware that if they're entering a science track in college, then physics is probably something they should have on their, on their transfer.
Gotcha. Makes perfect sense.
That's happening one-to-one, but we just want to make it more transparent.
Thank you. Another learning question, sorry.
So, the next thing in the packet is just a review of the FY23 budget and timeline, as well as the scheduled presentations. I feel like it kind of goes with eight, because I'm not sure that you all have decided on what your January meeting dates are going to be. I created the calendar as if you only met once in January, on January 25th. At that point, we would do the maintenance of effort budget, and then I laid out kind of the traditional presentation that we've had in the past. You do generally meet more frequently than twice a month during budget season, so, you know, we're happy to add in additional meetings that people are aware of, but I think in February and April, we kind of get in that weird spot where there's a week of vacation again, so, so folks sometimes have plans. But I also think it's important, while we're working through some of the budget presentations, to not lose focus of some of the other work. So, these are just dates that I've identified for budget presentations, but you can see from, from below, there's a social emotional support update, there's another tech update coming, and I just want to make sure that we have time for those, in addition to making our way through all of the reports for the budget presentations.
So, look at the dates, they look-
Can't see them. They look great, and the bottom ones look perfect.
But that's why I was looking at my, the calendar on my phone to try to gauge where it is. My opinion is, based on everything going on with the Commonwealth, I think numbers are going to be later. I mean, we can expect numbers later just because of uncertainty, right? Around, around the economy, you just don't know, right? So, I'm almost questioning, do we backload more into March? And, you may have to put more into March, because April, you can't put any more in. When you look back, when you go backwards from town meeting?
Right.
Right?
But the three Tuesdays minus school vacation.
Yeah, so, so you're, I think your May and April timeline looks as good as it's going to get. I personally think we need to-
Add a meeting?
Well, we need to add, I think we need to add a meeting or two in March. And, we can keep the other ones, we decide, just have to think about, who's the timing, who's around, and everything else. That's just my opinion, looking at this.
You could fit two more in March, the 22nd and the 29th.
Yeah.
So, there's technically four. Actually, there's nothing more than that, that's three, one, right?
Three, one, yeah. So, I did the first and the third.
It doesn't mean that other budget meetings aren't happening, right? Budget subcommittee, meeting with the town, meeting with advisory, meeting with the select board, all that stuff falls into this, but for us. I, my concern is, the balancing meeting last April was tough.
The fee discussion took more than one night last time.
The fee discussion, you're right. And they ended up going into the budget balancing meeting, right? They ended up being, they ended up overlapping. And this could be equally as hard, if not more difficult. So, my opinion is if we don't, if we can't work without having as much definitive information as we can, as we possibly can have, and we know the governor's budget will come out by the 25th of January, good. But that tends to be either the upper or the lower bounds, depending upon the year. Lately, it's been the lower bound, which is a good thing, but we just don't know. We don't know what the town's going to look like, right?
Right.
So, we're adding more meetings, or can we add more presentations to some of the existing meetings? I know they're, they're lengthy, and it's tough, because you don't want to rush through something, but-
They're lengthy, it's tough. We also need, we'll have another, as Erin said, a social emotional update, which is going to add into the budget, which, right, which will be part of the-
Right, it'll fall under students, I mean, what we're asking for, for FY23 and for that category will fall under there, but I think it's important to go back, like with interrupted learning, to some of the topics we've hit earlier, now that, you know, the school year is starting to progress, and we're, we're starting to get an idea of what the struggles are that kids are having. I mean, all, everything that we talk about feeds into the budget process, but I don't want to call everything a budget conversation.
No, I get, I get it.
Makes the work really boring.
But we look at the program of studies, please, right? Because you saw the, you know, it was good to see the budget implications. What I would say, just looking at that, at least one thing, I would do teaching and learning somewhere in March, and do an interrupt, do an interrupted learning update with it, separate it from student services, and do a social emotional, because we've got the social emotional in November, and that'll give us-
Sort of split list, right?
Yeah. That, that would be the first thing, looking at this.
From what you can see?
No, I-
It was in your email.
I don't, no, 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 I just, I see it and try to think through the timing, because right now, April-
So, do you think there's a value, so if we meet on January 25th with maintenance of effort, odds are we'll have an idea of the first round of chapter 70, because that's after the third Wednesday for the governor's budget. Do you want to start budget presentations on February 1st?
Yes.
So, just, one week next week, no break between? I'm fine with that, I just want people to know that that's back-to-back.
Yes.
Okay.
Because, here's the thing, let's be realistic. Expect the NEMA twenty-five dollars additional per student.
It'll be thirty, it'll be thirty.
And a drop because our enrollment drop.
This is his farewell tour, so maybe he'll throw money at us.
Yeah.
Maybe he won't.
Rumor is they're not happy with him over his masking update today, or his failure to do a, a, his advisory versus a mandate, so people aren't happy with him, so maybe he won't get his farewell, farewell gift.
So, we'll do student services and a social emotional update on that first one. Or do you want me to do elementary and secondary first, and then?
What do we think, will we have more data if we do it later? So, yeah, elementary, no, elementary and secondary is going to be set, once we set the programs, program studies, because it's just going to be enrollment-based and program studies-based, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're asked.
Athletics is later, though.
Athletics is-
Pretty, say, you could probably put that in, couldn't you?
Do you want to start with those ones? Because I do think there could be some asks-
Those budgets are probably pretty stable.
At the elementary level, depending on what kind of success we see with the tutors, what kind of appetite there is to go back to reading and math coaches and that type of.
So, based on that, then, why don't you do, why don't you do in the first two, athletics and technology and visual and performing arts, and then move elementary, secondary, split teaching and learning, and student services?
Yeah, we can do that.
Make sense that way?
Is there anything else you'd like a presentation on? These are traditionally what we've done. Are you interested in us calling up the nurses, or looking at transportation as a separate budget in itself? We've kind of gone higher level, but-
You know what would help, go ahead, Susan.
Well, and I'm, I'm just looking, because we still have, you know, I guess the CARES money, because don't we go out to 2023 with CARES money? Where does that come in on this, will that?
So, that'll be part of your budget balancing conversation. So, we kind of, I can give you an update in January on where we were with the plan that you all approved for the tutors and whatnot. Our tutors are starting a little bit later than we had hoped, so they'll be, we'll expend less in year one of the plan than we had thought, so there's some, that rolls up into year two.
So, I think what'll help, you mentioned transportation, we're up for bid next fiscal year, so which would be then getting the budget for '24. So, so, a year from now, we'll be talking about a bid for transportation for the following year. Give or take a few months, right?
Yeah.
So, I think what would help, and what I would ask, is maybe we do it second meeting or third meeting in May, whenever we meet, whenever we meet after town meeting, so take the pressure off. What are other towns getting for bids? Meaning, what's the increase, and just so that we can start to prepare. I know we could sit and say, oh, that has to do with this year's budget and what we do with transportation revolving, and if we, someone say, oh, I want to buy a third bus, whatever it happens to be. I'm just saying. But we just, I think we need to prepare and have that data, so if we can make informed decisions.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think I would appreciate probably some more knowledge on that process, because we just talked about five hundred thousand dollars here, that gives us the ability to do some things. What, what strings are attached, what's that process look like, and maybe some, tying that away.
Same thing, but I didn't want to say it, because I knew-
Sure, I mean, just in general, the fiscal strategy with our revolvings is to be pretty conservative, so that when things like buses or turf fields come up, we have a chunk of it saved.
That's there for it, yeah.
And there are years where that's easier to do than other years, obviously, in a year where there's additional funds like CARES, there's, you know, more runway with what we're able to carry in our revolving, because we're not using some of the offsets that we normally would. But happy to go through kind of historically what the accounts have looked like. The balance in transportation is, is high for us, because we've known that we're going to make a purchase, so.
So, that leaves us one other question, when do we want to meet, January?
Yeah, this, yeah.
We're already the 25th. You can't do the 18th.
I will not be here on the 18th, but if you want to meet virtually, I'm happy to meet virtually.
I can be available virtually the 4th of the 11th. But then, David, would you take on Monday, meeting on the 11th?
What do you want to talk about on the 11th?
Actually, believe it or not, I'm out of town on the 11th.
Okay. That's a good question.
I'd love to meet just to meet, but let me know what you want to talk about.
I can do the 4th, I mean, I'm totally-
Let's see what we have. What do we have before budget? Nothing besides budget meetings to get ready for the budget.
Right, all you have on your future agenda list is social emotional supports update, and you have it as January, but if we're going to move it to part of the budget conversation, that makes sense.
So, let's start to think about, let's start to think about other things that could happen, right? That are, if they change, the masking, if the state removes the masking mandate, prior to us meeting, we default to the state.
Correct.
So, we wouldn't have to meet, so there's no need to meet for that. Would you be, could this, could the-
Love your optimism, but it would be amazing.
Gee, it would be amazing. So, I just want to see if, if the, if the state does something that would require us to meet, what would it be? That's the only question I have.
Was there, was there something on the state's agenda tied to chapter 70 and modifying the chapter 70 calculation? I thought I saw something come through.
That's on their agenda every year, Susan.
Yeah, but did they actually do that? Because I never heard, saw anything more, but I didn't know if it was always on their agenda, but I-
The only thing that I see in the pipeline that would necessitate a meeting is the vaccination mandate, right? So, the, the OSHA piece that's floating out there, the injunction that was filed in Louisiana has been overturned. There is some requirement that is in place for January 10th and February 9th. Right now, that does not cover municipalities, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to change over the course of the next thirty days.
So, what would we have to do?
But the town would have to take some action, too, right? Right, because it's not, it's not, it's not the education sector.
Exactly, so, what is, what would they be forcing us to do?
The town, if the town adopts a vaccination requirement, we would need to meet for strategy associated with bargaining, because we would need to bargain the impact of that change for all of our units.
Got it. Okay. So, other than that-
I don't, no, there's nothing else out there.
There's nothing out there, right? Because the way we took the vote, if they remove the mask mandate, let me rephrase that, when they remove the mask mandate, we follow it. I'm trying to be optimistic, because I don't want to hit another Greek letter. Found out the next one's hot.
Do we need to meet to approve the updated letter?
Yes, shit. Oh, shoot, sorry, I apologize.
You've been so correct in your language up until that moment.
Geez.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out-
It's ten seconds, though.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out. Okay, so maybe we do something on the 4th. And even if it's just to meet, can we meet virtually for that?
For the 4th?
We can't, because the select board is meeting.
You can meet whenever you want virtually. I don't, I don't like the message it sends for us to meet virtually, but as a matter of business, I understand.
If we have one piece of business to approve the letter, I, and again, I completely agree with you. I think it's, it sends a bad message, it's the wrong thing, it just, there's lots of reasons why. Personally, I'm adamant that we still meet.
But if it's just for the one thing we can do-
If it's just for the one thing, I think we should do it virtual. Because that also, it saves, I think, PAC TV, too.
Well, and you're talking January 4th, so the timing of it-
Would be quick.
Yeah.
Right, I also just request that we have a 7:30 start time, that's the first meeting of the town DEI committee, is January 4th at 6:00. As an appointed member of that board.
That's worse than what I said. I can't unsee that, 7:30, and we will have, so based on that, we'll have to, to mark this up this week. Okay.
Have the updated fee, you know, the fee discussion we had last meeting, we're going to vote on.
The updated, if we didn't change the policy, we just changed the fee?
Yep, we can, we can do that on the 25th. I guess, two things I want to know, who's going to monitor it, and who's going to collect it?
Yep.
And what's, what's the cost of doing that in hours or whatever? What do we anticipate that? And actually, I did have another thing I was thinking about earlier tonight. How are we going to solicit, because we, we were doing this so that we could do other Because we were doing this so that we could do other things such as tutoring and such, right? That's the way it was presented?
Mm-hmm.
How are we going to make that happen?
Good question, so, you know...
I don't know who, I don't even know who that's...
I can answer the fee, the collection piece is easy, because it's all done through the software, so that's easy.
Collection piece is easy. Who's going to monitor to make sure that's right?
I mean, that's, obviously, we have internal controls as far as accounting, policies and procedures, but monitoring the programs is something that we've...
Well, who monitors it now? Like, who monitors when somebody rents space at the high school?
So it's a flat fee associated with the rental and the timeline that they put into the facility usage, so the percentage of receipts is not, so who's auditing whether 10 people show up or 5 people show up? That's not part of it now.
Right.
So it's all handled through the software, through the SchoolDude in conjunction with Munis. So SchoolDude is the software that we use for facilities usage, and then Munis is our accounting software, so it generates a bill, and the county sees a whole bill.
Okay, so, so we would have to figure out how to, you know, charge each person who's...
Because I think the initial, the initial proposal was to do it ahead of time, right? Prepay?
Yeah.
I don't think that, that works well for us, right?
Right, because then people have to, the teacher has to sign up for a time slot and then solicit students.
And then the kid cancels last minute, right? How many times, or the day before or day of, they cancel because of...
Well, with cancellation, as a student, as a former piano student, you, that's on you.
You get to make up.
Yeah, you can try to make it up, it has to be within a certain time, or you...
But they're not using the space, they shouldn't have to pay for the space.
And they can also charge for the, like, okay, like, students were used to paying for a semester at a time.
At a time.
So you could pay for, like, the, from, you know, September 1st through end of December.
But that's, that's the expectation, right, on music? If we look at this for all encompassing?
Yeah.
It's probably not going to be the same way for tutoring. I don't think tutoring would be the same way, would it?
Right, no.
That's not how it is.
Or could it? I mean, unless there's somebody that just wants to reserve Wednesday at 5:00, right, and it depends who the kid is.
Right, but that's not going to be, it's not going to be all the time.
Right.
But could they front load, their fee is going to be their fee, does the tutoring fee change based on subject? I don't really, I'm asking that.
We don't set the fees, so.
Yeah, it changes based on tutor.
But it's usually like a per half hour, per hour.
It really depends on the providers and what thing, it does depend on the subject.
Yeah, because I would, I would think the complexity, I mean, if you're tutoring calculus versus tutoring some, you know, I'm not downplaying, you know, times tables, if we use that terminology.
There's just two people that are able to provide that service, so if there's a demand, right?
Would there be a way to do a projected amount, the teacher has to come up with a projected amount, and then reconcile at the end of the term, like at December, like...
At the end of the...
Quarter or whatever? So are we doing...
Yeah, you're just building in a couple of steps that don't exist now, so I'd have to go through and tell you what...
So can somebody come up with a recommendation on what we should do?
So I'll work with you, I'll email you kind of what I'm thinking, and we can get it in sorts.
Yeah, that was, that was quite, I mean...
I ran out of my lance, too.
I still think, listen, I still think it's a good idea. I just couldn't figure out the mechanics.
No, that's a good question, that's a good, that's a good question.
Mayor Beth, when I say tomorrow, what was that thing I was going to do?
Get it into work.
Get it into work. I'm just going to put the masking update.
I thought it was going to be send this thing.
So put that on January 25th, then?
I have to quiet.
We have to vote on the first round.
Yeah, we talk, we have to vote on them. It's almost Christmas.
Yeah, it got knocked off, I'm not going to ask it twice.
I took the clicker over there.
Boy, this is everybody.
You get your steps.
So as we've alluded to a couple of times this evening, there is no new information regarding the January 15th timeline for the DESE extension of the masking mandate. On our call last Wednesday with Commissioner Riley, he did say that the medical staff at DESE is hoping to wait until early January to make a call on that. They want to see what happens after the holidays, not necessarily the full break, right? Because if you look at that date, that is two weeks after we come back from winter break. So we would expect to get some sort of inkling from DESE on an extension of that timeline or an answer to your letter when we send it, probably the first week of January. Again, the vaccination percentages of 80% still stand, pre-K through 12 for any school building that's at 80%. You can have those that are vaccinated unmasked. Again, we've talked extensively about what our desire for that to look like in Pembroke would be. In the process for the waivers has not changed. This is the municipal vaccination data for 1216. So this comes out every Thursday, you can find it yourself on the DESE, I mean, on the state website. There's also a link to it on our COVID-19 resource pages. There has not been much movement in the town over the past two weeks from when I presented this on December 2nd. There's been about a, there's been 1% more of 5 to 11-year-olds that have been vaccinated. It was 2% before, it's now 3%, but overall, there's very minimal movement in any of the age categories. Most specifically, the groups that we're looking at, so at Pembroke High School, our vaccination percentage as of today is 73.47%. The last time I presented this to you, it was 72.7%. So in a two-week timeframe, we've creeped up a little bit, but have not moved into that 80% range as of yet.
About 44 off, if I'm doing math correctly?
You need 707 to be vaccinated.
52, 59.
60, 59, yep.
Need to map up 707.
So again, I just, if, if anybody is watching and listening, and you opted out of the state MIS database when your student was vaccinated and you are willing to share your vaccination information, please reach out to the school nurse at your child's school. We cannot capture those numbers if we don't have documentation of the vaccine. So again, if you opted out when you were signing up, we'd see an easy box to click when you're on their online platforms registering for vaccines, or you believe you did, you can call the school nurse and she can check to see whether or not your vaccination is recorded in our numbers. We did find, I think, two or three last week where the student was vaccinated but wasn't reflected in our SNAP data. The middle school grew a little bit more. So last time I presented this, we were at 62%. So we're just under 65% of the middle school. I'm optimistic that following winter break, we'll be closer to the 70% number, and we'll begin to gather staff information. So remember, we decided that at 70%, we'll start collecting the data for staff. So the middle school grew a little, at a faster rate over the past two weeks than the high school. Want to talk a little bit about the cases of school-aged children over the course of the school year. So what you have here is a bar graph, from the first week of school till this week, so the small little blue, and the N is the week of 1220. You can see the spike is exactly where we would anticipate it, being following the Thanksgiving holiday. Again, we obviously do anticipate another spike following any travel over the winter break or family gatherings or whatnot. The data here, the date on the test represents the actual date of the positive test, not necessarily the date that it came through Maven on the town side. So I think last year, there was some instances of folks trying to sync our data with what came through on the town emails. That's not necessarily the case. As we've said before, families have been great partners in this work with us and often share with us their testing status and information prior to making its way through the Maven database, which generally has a one or two-day lag time. I also want to encourage families, if you're taking home tests, if you do an at-home rapid test and it's positive, that does not automatically notify the Board of Health. So if you're taking a home test, you should call the Pembroke Board of Health if you get a positive test result, so that the numbers that are reflective on the town side are accurate. At our last meeting, Mike, you asked what, what's our plan if we see a spike? And so we met administratively last week to talk about what kind of resources we have if we are to see a spike greater than what we saw at Thanksgiving. I think at Thanksgiving, it was really central here to this building. At North is where we saw the largest increase in cases, it was pretty sporadic across the other four buildings. But in the instance that we do have an increase, a large increase post-break, what are we going to do? So at the elementary level, we had a conversation with three building principals about shifting support staff. So support staff could be some of the tutors that we talked about, it could be paraprofessionals, it could even be a teacher, depending upon where the group of students is that's positive, to supply more at-home support for students in addition to the one check in a day that they're already getting. One of the first questions that we get is about live streaming. There are teachers that are live streaming in their classrooms, it is not required of teachers to live stream. Obviously, it is, you know, the teachers recognize that keeping a student on pace with the class is helpful for their return, but again, that is not our expectation or our requirement. Another option is to look at filling substitute positions. So I'm sure you've seen, there's a shortage of everything in the world, including substitutes, and it really doesn't matter if you pay $90 or $95, that's pretty much the going rate here in the cell shores, anywhere from $85 to $100 a day, but everybody's having a hard time filling positions. We do have some opportunity with that timeframe right after our winter break, because a lot of college students are still home on their winter break. So we have reached out to some of our recent Pembroke High School graduates to have some extra bodies following winter break in order to supply some additional check-ins for students at home, to offer some relief time to some of our classroom teachers, so they can check in with students at home as well. At the secondary level, there's a couple of unique opportunities. So the National Honor Society students have already started tutoring during Titan Time for students in the building at the high school. So Mark and Donna and I talked about offering that to our students that are at home 7 through 12 during Titan Time. So an opportunity to connect with a National Honor Society student for a specific assignment that you need help on or a content area that you could use a little bit of support in. So that's 30 to 35 minutes a day, depending on your building, where there's some dedicated live support for you. In addition, depending on the numbers, and what we've seen for numbers at the secondary level are obviously a little bit less than the elementary level because of the ability to vaccinate, meaning much, much greater timeframe there. But we talked about putting together a support schedule similar to what we had last year, where we would be able to say to families and students, you know, during this period of time, there's a math teacher available, science, social studies. It may not necessarily be your students' teacher, but somebody available in the content area to provide live support and help for students. So all of those things are in place, obviously, the subs are a wild card, but we have a plan. I mean, we're able to kind of shift and pivot depending on what we see that week of the 3rd and the 10th.
Questions, thoughts? Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm optimistic, oh, I think it's into the slide, hold on. Look at that. I wanted to give you guys some reminders, because I know that you all sometimes get cornered in the grocery store or at a youth basketball game or, you know, wherever you happen to spend your free time outside of these meetings. So test and stay, per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is only available to unvaccinated students and staff that are identified as close contacts from a school exposure. Our nurses are getting a lot of calls from families about household exposure and why those students can't test and stay. That question was asked specifically at last week's DESE meeting with the commissioner. And there are two pieces to it. Obviously, the availability of tests is becoming a concern. We currently have about 1,700 in the district, but we've been told that getting more is going to be very difficult. And then in addition, it's the control, the control of that group of close contacts. So when you're in school and you're an identified close contact, we're able to maintain your spacing, we're able to maintain your mask wearing. We don't know what that looks like at your home or outside of school. So the level of control was one of the other reasons that DESE landed on only school-based contact.
So that, my next question was going to be, what's the plan for contact tracing? Thought it was, if that goes...
So the state contact tracing has been disbanded. There is a grant at the state level for local Board of Health, Boards of Health, I think the plural is the boards, to hire additional resources at the town level in order to help with contact tracing in the town. Right now, our nurses are doing an incredible job of managing it. You know, we do get some support from CIC, which is the group that the state has partnered with for the testing. When we have a large number of students that need to test and stay at any one particular building, they do send a nurse. They don't necessarily send much administrative help when it comes to the calls and the follow-up and all of that, so our nurses have been managing that.
Which, which, I knew, right? I knew they were getting rid of it, because that leads to my question of, how will they be able to contact trace to say that they weren't a close contact? Are they going to say then that, contact tracing determining who is a close contact?
So our nurses do that for school-based cases.
So, okay.
But what about non-school-based cases of close contact? Like, what if some, what if somebody in the household has COVID, but the rest of the household's vaccinated? Does that matter?
So there's no such thing as a vaccinated close contact, though I think we all understand that that's not what the, the science has shown lately as far as breakthrough cases, but there's no quarantining or testing requirement associated with vaccinated individuals.
Doesn't matter where they were a close contact, if they're vaccinated, they can come to school and there's no issue.
Yes, yeah, there's, obviously, there are close contact in the sense that they should be self-monitoring for 14 days for an onset of symptoms, but there's no additional steps that need to be taken for school or for any activity if you're vaccinated.
I guess, yeah, I guess where I'm trying to go with this is, because they're not contact tracing at the state, does that give more leeway to open up test to state and more students?
No, there was no indication that we'd be opening test and state and more students from the state-provided kits. You know, obviously, there's...
So how do they, because I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get to is more students eligible for test to stay, who want to be eligible. The question I, because it doesn't make sense, if they're taking away the way they're determining close contacts?
They're not taking the way they're determining it, it's still defined as someone that's within six feet of space for 15 minutes.
Still defined, it's still defined. But they were tell, they were telling a person you were a close contact. Maybe I'm not saying this correctly.
Right, and that their expectation is that the town still maintains that level of contact tracing, there just isn't that community tracing project at the state any longer. So the grant is supposed to fund additional staff at the town level, so we have Nancy Fund, our public health nurse that we share with Hanover, I know that Lisa has been in communication with a couple of individuals that used to work for the state project to come to work in Pembroke to help with some of the tracing.
I was trying to determine if there's a loophole to get to more people contact tracing.
Just a reminder, if you are an unvaccinated student or staff that was identified as a close contact for a school-based exposure, the expectation is that outside of school time, you're quarantining. So you test and stay at school, but you should not be attending sporting events, social events, you should be quarantining. So we've seen a couple of confusion issues with that, and families and students still continuing to attend youth sports practices because they tested and tested negative that day at test and stay. Outside of school hours, you should be quarantining.
Is there anybody else confused with how this, all of the rules changing and how it, maybe all the rules changing, but what the new rules are? Might be only one, if I'm the only one, then I'll just...
You can keep asking the questions.
No, I think, I mean, the school is fairly clear, like, yeah, it tipped my life in other areas, and that's where it gets confusing, because I think of it one way and then I think of it another way, and it varies, that's the challenge that we have right now.
I was a little confused about, it has to be school-based.
Those are the only people we're able to offer, it has to be unvaccinated. So if you're a, if you sit next, if Suzie and I sit side by side and Suzie tests positive, odds are I've spent 15 minutes within three feet of space with her unmasked over the course of the school day. If I'm vaccinated, I don't have access to a school-based test and stay. Per the DESE, I'm not allowed to use those for vaccinated individuals, even though I'm a close contact.
You don't have to anyways, because you're vaccinated.
You don't have to, but, but some people and staff and families want some sort of reassurance, right?
Right, of course, yeah, absolutely.
I was hoping there was a loophole or a way to get to those students, because the state was in contact tracing. Clearly, that wasn't the case. So let me ask, let me just make this suggestion, and I'll let other people, if people disagree, do we need to send out an updated grid of if this, then that, after the beginning of the year?
Yeah, so the, yeah, we have the flow chart on the website, but I'm happy to push out kind of a reminder with folks.
I would say after the first of the year, because, so, I mean...
Sure, just a reminder on the timelines, so if you are a student or a staff member that's quarantining for exposure but choosing not to participate in test and stay or have household-based exposure, you can return to school after day 10, so on day 11, and the day of your, your first day of isolation or isolation from the positive case if it's in your household, this is day zero. So it's really 11 to 12 days before you can return. If you're choosing to test...
With no symptoms.
With, you have to be asymptomatic. If you're choosing to test, you can test on day five or later and return after day eight. So our nurses are really great at sharing that information with families, you know, it's confusing, right? The timelines are confusing, and they understand and appreciate that. Um, but you know, the more we can push it out and, and take away at least two or three of the questions that they're going to get, the better off we can be.
So the other question I have, can you go back, go back to the, the bar chart? The question I have is, out of all of our student cases, two questions. Was there any determination on spread through school or school activities? And have we had any students hospitalized?
So we haven't had any students hospitalized, that's an easier question to answer. Has there been any school-based spread? Um, we saw a cluster of students at grade six, um, here at North, following the Thanksgiving holiday and we've seen a, a cluster of preschool students here, um, at North in the past week or so. I do, the, the, the tracing at the Board of Health has not determined that it's school-based spread, because all of the students are participating in something else outside of school.
Okay.
Um, we're not, those are the only two kind of significant clusters that we've seen. We're currently seeing some small spike at the high school with boys' basketball, but that just seems to be unfolding over the past day or so. And the students in particular are friends outside of school, which-
Got it, yep, okay. I guess the point is, is thankfully, so far, the, all the cases have not required hospitalization.
So if you are testing to return to school, you must receive a test from a doctor or from a lab. You can't give our school nurses a By Next Now Home test or one of the rapid tests that you get at CVS. Do, I think that may change over the course of the next thirty days, potentially, uh, because I do know folks are having a hard time getting tests scheduled on that day five in order to return to school. But at this, at this time, the DESE DPH guidance says it must be a doctor or lab-performed test. And just a reminder, because some folks are traveling. Anybody traveling outside the country over winter break must provide a negative test result before their students can return to school. So if your family has travel plans, um, I'm sorry, out of country, if your family has travel plans that involve leaving the country, you must make contact with your school nurse before your student returns to school. They cannot just come to school on January third if we haven't heard from you.
Anything else?
No, one quick question, um, and I might have missed this at the last meeting, I apologize. How are we handling sports and people coming into the building and teams and, is that why I made this the last meeting?
So we talked about that at our last meeting. So, the MIAA is requiring winter athletes, coaches and officials to all be masked. Obviously, if the contest is taking place in a school building, the expectation is that spectators are masked. We had quite a long conversation at the last meeting around, what about venues that are not school property? Like Haba McCarren or the Kingsbury Club or, um, the Gymastics Center where our gymnastics team performs. I think the committee voted to follow the rules of the venue. And having attended one of the hockey games last week, I can tell you, it would have been a nightmare if you were thinking that we were going to be able to figure out which kids went to Situate High School or which kids went to Pembroke High School. I'm sure Mark and, and Brian are much better at that than I. And from a parent perspective, you know, there's, um, it's, it's, it's really difficult to explain. You were just here for your seventh grader and you didn't need a mask, now you're here for your ninth grader and you need a mask. So, I did meet with the cell show superintendent last Wednesday and there are a couple of districts that are trying to enforce the masking of students and spectators at off-site, and I wish them luck with that. It does require a far greater number of game admins at, at the venue to, to manage that and there's not necessarily a repercussion, right?
What do you do if somebody, it's, it's, okay, so you're saying it to students, but what happens if a student walks in from a different school district? Neither one of them, neither one of the districts is competing? Or a graduate walks, I mean, graduate walks and all of a sudden, oh, I'm with Situate, which is a non-masking district, say fifty, eighty percent. It's ridiculous. And I did, they're not enforcing it for non-Situate kids. So, for, for a hockey game, and I think even onsite basketball or anything else, what I was told is they're not enforcing, because they're an eighty percent district? It's just, it's too different.
Right, so if, if our basketball team were to play at Situate High School, the, the team needs you, the fans do not, regardless of where you're from.
Yeah.
So.
So, we talked, we started this by talking about the letter, and we talked about the off-ramp, right? If this isn't the absolute definition of not giving clear guidance, I don't know what is.
I know.
Ambiguity is, is what's making this difficult, and I'll just say this, somewhat of a rhetorical comment, and the people who are making the, creating ambiguity aren't the people who are having to deal with the ambiguity. Right? And that isn't even us, that's the people above us and the people who, you know, at this table. It's just, it's, it's incredibly unfair. I understand what we're dealing with, I'm not trying to dismiss it or lessen it, but it's just, whatever.
I'm going to check the mailbox.
I've been checking my computers over there.
So, with that, we do have to go back to the first read of the program of study. So is there a motion to adopt the, uh, as a first read, the program of study is as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Suzie, second by-
Second.
David. Any further discussion? Aldous in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Aaron, is that it for the night? So at eight twenty-four, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Lance, second by David, Aldous in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? All right.
Great, thanks everybody.
Happy New Year.